Call to order the meeting of Monday, April 24th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Councilmember Warden.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of April the 10th before you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Mayor Protam Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Archibald, is there any additions, deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes stand as submitted. We do have one presentation tonight, and the clerk would read that. Please.
Representatives from the St. Clair County Library will give a presentation about the library system and their upcoming 100th anniversary celebration.
Fantastic. Thank you so very much for your time this evening. I'm Allison Arnold. I'm the Director of St. Clair County Library System and have been for the last three years, but I've been with the system for 17 years. With me tonight, I have Mr. David Whipple. He is the Vice Chair of the Library Board, and he's been with us for two and a half years. Tonight, I want to share with you a little bit about the library, and specifically about the Port Huron branch. We are a library system of 11 branches. We're across the county and we're one of the only county departments that you can receive consistent service within 10 miles of each other. So any of the branches is within 10 miles of another branch. We have, and there we go, okay, get the little button working. In 2016, the county's population was almost 160,000 individuals. Of that 160,000 people, we saw library cardholdership at just over 67,000. That's a very good penetration into the community, that communities value their libraries and use them quite often. But, on the next slide, which is our Port Huron branch, in 2010, our Port Huron population was just over 30,000 people. 27,000 people named Port Huron Branches their home branch. That's an incredible population, or penetration into our community that use the library. We see about 42 patrons an hour, and the library in Port Huron is open 67 hours a day. So, or, excuse me, a week.
I was going to say it's a long day.
It feels like so. That's right. So that's about 500 people a day into our community, into our downtown, using businesses, using restaurants, and then using the library, and of course, city and county services in downtown. We have traditional library services, of course, your fiction and nonfiction materials, print materials, our large print, our paperbacks, that sort of material, that you would suspect or expect to find in a traditional library. We also have music CDs, we also have puppets and fishing poles, because we have a big child population, as well as the use of our waterways. And so, we like to try to meet some demands and create new opportunities for the community. Our library services, as you would suspect, we have reference, and we have Wi-Fi, and we have computers, but you may not realize that we also house the county law library. We also have the government documents depository. We've been the federal and state depository. We're the second depository to be established in the state of Michigan, so we've been around for quite some time. We also have databases, and one of the things about databases is that this helps us to provide continuing education and lifelong learning. The public library likes to think of itself as the people's university. And I'll just talk very briefly about one of the databases called Gale Courses. Gale Courses is a database where someone could log in for free, and they can get training in a six-week course from a professional, a professor, or layperson, in all kinds of topics. I personally have taken several classes, Microsoft Project, technology, you can learn pet sitting. If you wanted to start a small business, you can learn the business of pet sitting. You can learn about law and legal issues, as well as medical and health issues. So it's a very powerful database. The databases on the slide here are databases that the county library purchases subscriptions to. These supplement the library databases that the Library of Michigan also subscribes to. So there are about 20 or more databases available through your library system. We're also very proud of moving into different formats for your library access, and your information access. We have several electronic format or platforms where you can get information. Overdrive and Hoopla are formats that you can get, eBooks, e-audio books, streaming media, comic books, or graphic novels, if you'd like. Zineo is a database for electronic magazines. So if you're a magazine reader, we've got over 200 titles in that database, and the nice thing about that is when you check out a magazine, there's no waiting for it, and it never checks itself back in. So if you like the cooking magazines and you want to keep recipes, you don't end up with piles and stacks of magazines in your home, or having to go back to the library and sift through, you have it right there on your device. The other nice thing about the online services is that these books and e-audio books, when you check them out, they automatically check themselves back in at the due date, so there are no fines accrued on the e-resources. And then, of course, we have mel.org, or the Michigan Electronic Library, where they have even more access points for patrons to use. And the Mel databases and the Mel Electronic Library is funded, in most part, by the IMLS, the Institute of Museums and Library Sciences, through the federal government, which I would encourage you to support as the next funding seed cycle comes through. There we go. The St. Clair County Library also is the subregional library for the blind and physically handicapped. We serve this population throughout four different counties, Santa Clara, Tuscola, St. Clair, and Huron. We provide services for, in terms of brailing, we also have reading opportunities in terms of recorded books. The state provides that material to this population for free, so it goes through the mail, free matter for the blind. We also provide a service called Home Connections. This is a service that we've had for a few years now, and it is growing. For any one of our St. Clair County residents who is unable to make it to the library for any reason, be it they just don't travel in the winter, or they're recovering from a surgery, or something like that, they can sign up for Home Connections and be connected to the world of information by the library mailing them reading material, whatever material they may be interested in, and we do that for them for free, for as long as they are confined to their homes. We have been providing computer classes for the last 17 years, and the demand has not declined. In 2016, we provided 270 computer classes across the county and served almost 2,500 patrons in those classes, and they learn everything from basic "this is a mouse and this is how you hold a mouse," to more complicated spreadsheet-type information. We also have special collections. The Michigan Room is housed in our basement, and it is our historical documents. One of the projects that we've just completed has been our first digitization project. We asked folks for their high school yearbooks from all of the high schools in St. Clair County. We were able to take those. We found an organization that would digitize those for us for free, and they sent them all back to us, and now they are up on the web. We do have some holes, so if you go in and take a look, and you happen to have a yearbook that we don't, let us know, because we will be sending yet another batch to be digitized. And this was an experiment for us, and it was a successful experiment, so we'll start looking at other aspects of our collection that we can digitize and make more broadly available. We also have, of course, the government documents, but a small business support collection that we are working on building. That's also going to be housed in the basement, where we have quiet study and research space, so folks can come down there and learn about new business, get help with starting their business plans, look for work, that sort of thing. And then, finally, for me, this is our 100th anniversary. A lot of stuff was happening in 1917, but we decided that one of the ways that we would thank our community for their support for the last 100 years was to have a speaker series. We've already heard from Mr. Garth Stein, who wrote The Art of Racing in the Rain. We saw a sold-out program of over 350 people, which is fantastic. The library hasn't seen that kind of turnout in a long time. On May 3rd, we have Temple Grandin coming. She's going to be speaking down in, at the East China Performing Arts Center. Unfortunately, within three days, she sold out. So that's over 650 people, which is, again, fantastic. In the fall, we have Jay Asher coming, and he is the author of Thirteen Reasons Why. If you've binged that show on Netflix, it just came out, very powerful stuff. And then, Gail Carson Levine, who wrote the Ella Enchanted books. She's going to be doing a writer's workshop for us in October, and we're very excited to have these folks coming. They wouldn't be able to come if we didn't have some wonderful sponsors. North Star Bank, McLaren Port Huron, and McDonald's helped us fund the speaker series, and we hope that it's so successful that they'd be clamoring to help us next year as well. Mr. Whipple, is a few things that he would like to share with you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and thanks for having us here tonight. Allison told you some facts. I will maybe share some passion with you. I've lived in this community a long time. Eight years ago, I got smart enough to realize I really needed to live in downtown Port Huron, you know, and move from Fort Grasset back downtown.
Yes.
As Allison said, I'm Vice Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. There are five trustees, and we're appointed by the county commissioner, and we all have districts. So my district is the City of Port Huron, Fort Grasset Township, and Birchville. And in the role as trustee, we run the library from a board perspective with a very capable staff. We have five-year terms. I'm two and a half years into it, and, boy, anytime you get into sort of a new organization or whatever, you find out, boy, you've got a lot to learn. And so Allison has been very good at answering my absolutely brilliant question, and my stupid questions, plural. So I've gotten a lot smarter about the library. We're really excited about the 100th anniversary. You know, it's one of the oldest library systems in the state of Michigan, and when I contacted the sponsors for sponsorship, I'll just tell you a story. Probably some of you know Marcus Schultz, and I called up Marcus, and I got probably 22% through my pitch to him, to try to get him to commit. And he just said, "Whipple, just tell me what you need, we're in." And it's that kind of passion that people have, and it's not often stated for their library, that we're really excited about. So this 100th anniversary is going to be wonderful. Why our library is important, and this is the passionate part about it, is more than ever, information and knowledge comes with a price. You know, we do have public schools, but for people who are out of school, and even people who are in school who don't have access to the Internet, for example, information comes with a price, and it's not a price that everybody can afford. And I personally am very passionate about making sure that information is not that stumbling block that people have in their lives. Sometimes the library serves because one of our staff recommends a book, and a person loves it, and it brightens our life. But a lot of the time, it's we can help people with resumes. We can get them so they have an email address, so they know how to use one of the free computers that we have in all 11 branches. And the computer use in the Port Huron branch is just amazing. If you ever go in there, you'll see most of the stations are on the first floor to the right as you come in the main door, and they're almost always used. And when information has a price, we have, I think as a society, we have to make sure that people have access to that information, and access to those resources. So we have the people to help, we have the classes, and we're constantly trying to do things to reach out to communities that are underserved, to realize the benefit that they can have to have an association with the library. I'd like to thank you for your support over the years. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, originally, there was a separate City of Port Huron Library, and back a long time ago, way before any of you were born, I'm sure, way before, there was an association and a merger between the St. Clair County Library System and the City of Port Huron Library. So we appreciate that the city has been involved in that. I appreciate this evening that you've given us an opportunity to tell you some of the information and what's happening with your library system, and thanks for listening to me, and listen to why I'm passionate about the library and service to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for presenting that tonight. I'm sure that everyone at home is listening, and here that they'll have lots more customers. Yes.
Just want to note, you guys forgot to mention how much you guys do for our schools. My wife is an educator, and she had kindergarten and preschool kids that she brought to the library, and it was my first year here, and she called me up. She goes, "You've got to walk across the street, that's the best gem you've got in town." So from a spouse of an educator, what you do for the schools is just amazing. The field trips, I get to hear all about it firsthand, so they love it there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the agenda to the public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any agenda or non-agenda item, please come to the podium, give us your name, and you have four minutes. And I see no one, so I will declare public comment closed. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb. We will take the vote.
Madam Mayor. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, you both talked it. Yes.
Did we take petitions one, two, and three off of the agenda, off the consent agenda?
One, two, and three?
Yeah.
Of which one, the communications?
Yeah, communications petitions. I want to get an opinion from the public safety officer.
Okay, one, two, and three off. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Warden?
Resolution, let's see, three, four, and five.
Okay. We will take the vote on the remainder.
Anything left?
Let me choose things.
I don't mean that meanly, but is...
There is two things.
Take the vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warden.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Items under the consent agenda, recognized April 28th is Arbor Day, and the City of Port Huron is the one item, and second item is second reading and enactment of an ordinance to amend Chapter 52 zoning, Article 3, District Regulations, Division 1, generally. Section 52, 162, map of the Port Huron Code of Ordinance, is the purpose of rezoning the property, generally described as 2373 Military Street, from C1 zoning district, general business district, to an A1 zoning district, which is medium-density, multiple-family residential district. And we will move then to communications. Communication number one.
Number one is to receive and file notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that an application has been received for a new SDM license with Sunday sales permit in the AM, and new gas pumps for Sunrise Stores LLC for 2539 Pine Grove Avenue.
Is there any objection from the council if we take all three of these together? Because they're all for, well, they're two together. The first two are for Sunrise Stores.
All three is fine.
Pardon me?
All three is fine.
All three is fine? Okay, we'll do those then.
Number two is receive and file notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that an application has been received for a new SDM license with new Sunday sales permit for the AM, and new gas pumps for Sunrise Stores LLC 3578 Pine Grove Avenue. Number three is receive and file notification from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that an application has been received for a new SDM license with new Sunday sales permit AM, new beer and wine tasting permit, and new gas pumps for Admiral Petroleum Company II LLC at 1912 Pine Grove Avenue.
Is there a motion to receive and file these communications?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Give it to him.
Councilmember Ruiz.
No, it was Harris.
Or is it Harris? Okay, I just heard a male voice down there. Councilmember Harris, I believe you have a question on this one.
I guess my question is, one of our adjacent communities, basically, their chamber and some of their public safety officers have kind of taken a stand on this issue as far as liquor sales on Sunday and stuff, and I just kind of wanted to touch base and see what we think about it, you know? I know there's really nothing we can do with it, but...
Bingo. I don't think there's, I don't think their stand will be heard in Lansing. It's all about the permits that they can sell. I'm waiting for the Wolverine to install gas pumps. If you can do it one way, why not do it the opposite way? I mean, literally, you see, they don't ask me. I tried to fight this six years ago, and they were bent on making sure that you could buy not only beer, but liquor and wine while you stopped and fueled your car. I could see the issues with it, but it's, that's fallen on deaf ears, so candidly, it doesn't even have to come to us for approval, they just give us notice of it. I understand where you're coming from, I don't like it, but...
Yeah, I'm really glad that it become on the agenda here to let the public know, but...
Yeah, we're left with the aftermath of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else on these three communications? We'll take the vote to receive and file.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. From the city manager, number one.
Accepting the bid from Pentura LLC in the amount of $17,885 for a pavilion structure at Lakeside Beach.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protam Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lamb. Mr. Freed, is there a...
Madam Mayor, we're going to have Nancy come up and talk about the donation that we received from Rotary International to help spin this project, to build a brand-new structure at Lakeside Beach.
Thank you, Mayor, and the city council. As you probably recall, last summer, we did receive a donation from the Rotary Club in the amount of $15,000 to put a pavilion at Lakeside Beach. They also put a marker, which is already placed there, as the Rotary Club pavilion. We were able to, unfortunately, only had one bidder, but we had a sealed bid for a 20-by-34 pavilion. It'll be similar to the picture here, and we're looking forward to it. I think it'll be a great addition to the park, and then we'll have our bigger one for our other grant that we got, so we'll also rent this out for little birthday parties and stuff like that next to the splash pad, so...
Any other questions? Nancy's standing up.
Nancy, what is the cost for the city? Is there any cost, the remaining cost?
Yeah, the, well, the actual bid came in higher than the 15 grand that was donated, so we're taking the extra out of our capital in the parks, which is the village money area, so we'll take the extra out of that, from the county.
And again, where is this going to be located?
The picture there shows kind of where they put the markers, see that little triangle thing? So it'll be next to the splash pad, so we're hoping it'll be an addition, more like I said, birthday parties and kids' activities as well. So we're very excited, and we really appreciate them thinking of us as we're trying to continue to put improvements in the park, so...
Just lastly, Mayor, I just like the partnership effect, you know, people stepping up, trying to make a difference, you know, economically, speaking.
Yeah, me too, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, that makes all the difference in the world. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we do appreciate it, because it's, the only balance left is $2,885, so we're getting quite a bargain for that. How many picnic tables could you fit underneath this?
We're thinking between six and eight.
Six and eight.
Yeah, and we will rent it out like as we do for the gazebo, and reduce rate, obviously, for the residents, but so that there's, you know, some revenue coming from it as well, but also in addition to the park, so...
Very nice. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Harris?
Just a cautionary thing, knowing how important these pavilions are, especially with the Fort Grasset Park up there that the county's got, I, like I say, I hope we're really dedicated to, you know, earnestly keeping it scheduled so people can use it, or people don't invade it when somebody else has got it. So I guess that's, that's going to be a challenge for you guys, but it's something we have to look forward to.
Yeah, one of the nice things is the concession stand is directly there, so we have some ideas of how we can make sure that it's reserved for the weekends for different parties and stuff, so...
It will be very popular.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item two, please.
Is accepting the proposal from Edward J. Painting LLC in the amount of $30,000 for painting of 670 city-owned fire hydrants.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Protam Ashford. Mr. Freed, if you'd explain this one.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council, Lenny's going to come up and go in detail about this project, but it is not just simply painting fire hydrants, there's far more to it, that I'd like Lenny to go into detail about these hydrant maintenance.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Historically, in cities about this size, there is a division of labor that goes into the maintenance of fire hydrants. In this city, we've got 1,450 of them. The utilities department would generally do the exercising, the valve exercising, and the flushing of these, and repairing them, or replacing them as necessary throughout the course of the year. And the fire department would normally be the one to paint them and to do what's called flow testing, so you see what the output of the particular hydrant is. Currently, we have a map showing the flow testing of all of these hydrants that are within the city. That has been done by the fire department. It's my understanding that until about 2005, the fire department was painting and maintaining the exterior of all of the fire hydrants within the city. But after about that time, I think with budget cuts and staff cutbacks, that was no longer possible. The utility department tried at some point to maintain the paint on some of these, but they were using seasonal labor and found that that was really not cost-effective, and that's the problem to this day. It's not cost-effective for us to put temporary seasonal or permanent staff out into the field to try to paint these hydrants on a regular basis, which is really what they need to stay current. So what we've done instead is we've taken and put into the budget from last year $30,000 to start the process of keeping these painted. I'll show you a picture, well, I will if Jim will. I just went out today, and just the first two hydrants I saw, I took a picture of. And you can see, this is a pretty typical fire hydrant. They're painted red, so that you can find them. Firemen and canines can find these things at any time, but you'll notice the...
Canine, you know all those four dogs.
This is a very important piece of infrastructure for the city, and you'll notice that there's rust. The body of the barrel of the fire hydrant is painted and protected, but the flange is starting to rust, and this needs to be maintained in order to ensure that the hydrants will, so that the hydrants will be operational for many years. What we did was, with this $30,000 budget item, is we said, "All right, we want to find out, without telling people how to do it, without specifying means and methods, how many fire hydrants we could paint for this amount of money." And we put out a request for proposals and asked people to give us back a proposal detailing their methods and how many they could do. Edward J. Painting came in and, with three other companies, which had their own ideas, and gave us a proposal that specified how they're going to be removing the paint, containerizing the paint and the rust chips and everything, because that potentially is lead-based and therefore has to be disposive as hazardous material, and then painting without causing problems with the caps and the seals, et cetera. Once we got these proposals back, we did a source selection committee review consisting of the utilities manager, one of his engineers, and the utilities staff engineer who does the utility work, the maintenance work on these in the field. And they came up with a rank order, top to bottom, of just exactly who they thought And they came up with a rank order, top to bottom, of just exactly who they thought, because they're all using the same budget, and it turns out that Edward J. Painting could do the most number that we thought they had a reasonable method of using metal motorized gears and such to remove the paint, containerize it, and then paint the exterior of the fire hydrants themselves. There are other methods that were more high-tech, but in fact, what that meant was, we couldn't do as many. One of the companies, you know, had a very high-tech solution, but they could only do a hundred fire hydrants, and it would take us far too long to finish the project if we did it that way, so... In any case, that's the process that we went through to get to where we are now, which is, we've got these proposals, and we recommend the approval of Edward J. Painting, because they gave us the best, most technically feasible method, and we got the most hydrant painting to be completed, and if we continue at this rate, we'll be able to finish this process in about three years.
You mean, Mayor? Yes, Mayor Protem Ashford, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Out of the one thousand four hundred and fifty, how many can Edward J. do?
Six hundred and seventy.
Six hundred and seventy. Does he have a plan that he...
We are going to sit down with them and designate the six hundred and seventy of the worst hydrants that we want to have done first, and we will work with them with the map of the hydrants and determine. We're probably gonna be working from south to north.
Okay, and what is the urgency, what prompted you to want to just, I know the corrosion, I know what you're saying, you know, you've already made something like a business case or whatever, but what's, is there a hurry for this?
Prompting us to do this, the fact that if we don't, these hydrants will continue to decay, and eventually they will not be usable for firefighting, which is really what we use it for. The utilities department uses these also to flush our system. We have to do that on a regular basis. We do half of the city every year, and we use the fire hydrants to do that.
But they've been in bad condition, but you still have been flushing them.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just the painting that you need to...
Well, the painting is for the exterior, the flushing is for the interior, and yes, we have to make sure that the exterior doesn't rust to the point that they are no longer usable. We end up replacing hydrants on a regular basis as needed, and we're going, in all cases, to a standard East Jordan type of hydrant, the one you see on the right. That is the one that we maintain the spare parts for. We still have spare parts for the others, but those are the ones that we want to concentrate on so that we efficiently can replace and repair the hydrants that are within our system now, and this is prompted by the fact that we need to do something to maintain the exterior, or they will begin to degrade to the point where they're not usable anymore, and then we'll have to replace a lot of them at once.
Mayor, just one last question, because I don't want to try to dominate things. Do we have a cycle that we're on in terms of doing this process?
Ma'am, when you approve this contract, we will be.
Oh, okay, so you're just establishing a cycle now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Just a quick clarification, you say you're establishing a cycle. What does that mean? We're never going to stop doing it?
The question is, essentially, have we been doing this, and the answer is no. Once we get this contract in place, then we'll begin to do this on an annual basis. We will do a portion, and hopefully we'll get them, all the hydrants, properly painted, and we will be able to maintain them in the future doing the same thing.
So every year, we're going to have a section of them being painted and...
Yes, sir.
From now on, when in the past, we've had staff doing it.
Up until about 2005, it was being maintained on an annual basis by the fire department, but they stopped doing it at that time because of other reasons, and we, what we're trying to do is get back to maintaining these properly, so that they can be used by the fire department and they can be used by the utility department.
Thank you.
Lenny, and as well, the cycle's gonna be a three-year cycle, correct? So we'll do all hydrants in three years?
That's the anticipation, yes, sir.
Then there'll be a reprieve after that till they need to be done again, correct?
At some point, we will be able to judge how often we would need to be repainting them, and if it turns out to be a three- or four- or five-year cycle, so much the better, but we're getting started now, as much as anything, to determine just exactly what the costs, the cost basis is per hydrant, and in this case, it turns out to be about forty-five dollars per hydrant, which is actually a pretty good deal, when you consider that we have to de-scale, remove the paint, and then paint them.
But in one last thing, I just want to point out to the mayor and council, the fire department used to have about more than fifty firefighters, and they had extra staff that they were able to do the fire hydrants. They are now dramatically cutting staff, and we don't, when they're running so lean, we don't want to jeopardize the safety by leaving the fire halls unattended, and so it's not that the fire department just didn't want to do it anymore. They generally do not have the resources or time to do it like they used to, and I think that's important to note.
I said, just curious, about 2005, whenever we did, we had staff doing it, firefighters, did they do what this company's saying, that they self-contained all the material they were taking off at the time and go through that process?
I think we brushed it with a quick coat of red.
That's what I would thought, so it's... All this lead-based...
This is a lot more intense than what was being done, correct?
So you're just putting stuff on top of it?
Yeah, just later.
Okay, you know, I don't know if I missed something in the air or what, but one size don't fit all, they don't corrode all at the same time. You're gonna go on an as-needed basis in terms of your, oh, okay, I thought I was missing something, because just because you're gonna do it all annually, doesn't mean they all are gonna be in that same shape or whatever. Oh, okay.
One of the things as well, that's important to point out, is we've made such a huge investment in the CSO that a large portion of our infrastructure is relatively new within ten or fifteen years, and these water mains that we installed are literally designed to last a hundred years, and so the only part that's exposed is the hydrant, and so if we can make these hydrants last longer to the same life of the main, it should be more cost-effective in the future.
Councilmember Harris?
I just have a question. Do we have a failsafe mechanism in place where if we see they do a hundred of these and it don't look like we're getting the quality, that we can stop? You know, we're talking six hundred and seventy fire hydrants, and we should be able to tell after fifty or a hundred whether they're gonna do the job that we want.
Yes, sir. We are meeting with the contractor in a pre-construction meeting, and we will have an inspector who will oversee the work, and if it isn't going as we anticipate it will go, we can stop it at any time.
That's, okay, thank you.
How long will the project take?
We anticipate three weeks to a month.
Any questions from this side?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Warden?
I just, a couple comments, actually, the, I appreciate the approach that you described as kind of doing a reverse thing, how many can we get done, and what is the process, and to kind of see what the contractors out there come up with, and when I try to calculate this out, you know, under fifty bucks or forty bucks per hydrant, for them to take the time to remove not only the rust off and then prep it and then repaint it, I think that's an incredible price for amount of time that would go on this stuff, so I just want to say that I appreciate that effort, and it seems, you know, if you mentioned the other ones, it came with different technology or approach that might only do a hundred for the same price, and it seems like there's a potential here, but just make sure they're getting all that rust off. Thank you, Lenny.
Mayor Rep? Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
Lenny, what is the typical cost to replace a fire hydrant if we didn't paint them and they do corrode to the point that we have to replace them?
Depending upon how far you have to replace, that could be upwards of two to three thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem Ashford?
Just one more, but just to piggyback off that, well, we wouldn't really be at a degree to replace anything. That's why you're doing the work that you're doing, is that correct?
Ma'am, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Oh, I mean, you know, replacing a fire hydrant, you know, the timeframe longevity of doing something like that is not...
We aren't anticipating replacing as part of this contract, but as we find hydrants that don't work or in need of replacement, that's one of the things that we do every day, on an as-needed basis. We're hoping that this project will help slow down that process of replacement.
So, but have you found any? Have you found any that you think you have to replace?
Yes, ma'am, we replace them all the time.
Oh, okay, you replace them all the time?
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll say, we, in all cities, there's, hydrants stop working, the valve stops working. It's kind of typical, you get a handful each year that just need replaced, and then about once or twice a year, someone takes one out with a vehicle.
Every time someone takes out a new, takes out an old one, we put in a new one. Normally, the repairs don't involve a complete replacement, it involves replacing the valves, maybe the barrel, maybe the caps. It doesn't involve a complete replacement, it's just as needed. That's why we keep a warehouse full of parts for each of these.
Small random fact as well that they may find interesting, the Traverse City hydrants that we're going to, that we spec'd out during our CSO project, that which is now the majority of hydrants in the city, they actually have a break-off shear point, and they're designed to break in half if they get hit, so you only have to replace a shear kit on them if, in fact, that does happen.
You can see that shear plate, the flanges at the bottom of both of those. The one on the right is an East Jordan, one on the left is a Traverse City hydrant.
So what's your process? This is gonna all fall under pregnant maintenance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Resolution number one.
Is a resolution opposing the construction of a nuclear waste repository in the Great Lakes Basin.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, support.
Councilmember Archibald, supported by Mayor Protem Ashford. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'm just glad to see that we're doing this. What was this prompt by? Is someone else following suit with this?
We were asked by Senator Pavlov's office to please do this, and we've done this once before, and there's still, it's an ongoing problem, so they're just re, kind of reiterating it.
Reiterating, okay, thank you.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Item, I believe we might as well take three, four, and five together, because all they are doing is receiving and scheduling a public hearing for May eighth, all for the same date and all to do with the budget, so...
Number three is receiving the proposed capital improvement program and scheduling a public hearing for May eighth, 2017, to hear public comments from interested citizens on the proposed capital improvement program. Number four is receiving the proposed 2017-18 budget and scheduling a public hearing for May eighth, 2017, to hear public comments from interested citizens on this proposed budget. Number five is receiving the proposed 2017-2018 downtown development authority budget and scheduling a public hearing for May eighth, 2017, to hear comments from interested citizens on the proposed budget.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Warden.
And rest of the city council members, the library presentation, David Whipple, he made a comment there that stuck almost perfect, what I was gonna bring up here and my thoughts. He mentioned about access to information and not letting it be a subling block. Not everybody has access to review, and I'm always gonna keep, I guess, beating the drum. My thoughts on this is, it's two weeks. We're getting it today to receive and file and put it out there, but it is only two weeks, and the two weeks for a capital improvement program, you know, to review that for a public citizen, to be able to get access and try to look through that as well as the budget and also downtown development authority, I'd just like to see for future, or if we can, to give a little more time with those three things being filed, but to have all of them on May eighth, which is only two weeks away, it's the next, I think it's the next meeting, so I'd like to see, because it's an awful lot of information, and I do think, you know, I would, even myself, but I'm thinking of the rest of the people in the community here by the time they hear about it, and maybe have a chance to access and look through it, would like to have their feedback if they really do have some thoughts or some concern, and I think that two-week timeframe is pretty tight for that, all three of these at the same time, so I don't know if in the past it's had more time for that, but that was my, would be my suggestion, is to not have it just be two weeks away, to have it today, give a little more time for them to, then set a time for them to give some public comment, a public hearing on these issues.
These have always been these dates, and it does have to be adopted by the second meeting of May for purposes of having it, in effect, thirty days prior to the end of the fiscal year, so, and the pre-work done up to it has, it kind of doesn't allow for a whole lot of time there, but really, actually, you've got, yeah, two weeks until the public hearing, but then you've got another two weeks until we actually adopt the budget, so it's four weeks.
Well, I see, for...
But for the public to come and speak, it's two weeks, but...
Two weeks, yeah.
Madam Mayor, as well, I'd like to point out that the capital improvement plan is a revolving document that has been readily available on porthereon.orgopengovernment that you can download and read for the last, I think that's been up there for years since I've got here. What we essentially do is, we pull forward a year, review that year, and then the projects are really being added five years out. It's a five-year capital improvement plan, so we see these things come in years, and this is not some new document we just dropped out in the field for two weeks' notice. This document has been a living document, annually reviewed. Many projects are carried over year over year, and actually, there are the last, I believe, there's the last decade of budgets and capital improvement plans that you can download on porthereon.orgopengovernment and actually see how these documents come to fruition. I would also note that all these budgets legally, under state constitution and city charter, must be taken simultaneously in our budget adoption process, so we don't have the ability to break them up al cart, because all the budgets are, they're interwoven together, meaning you can't legally adopt a budget until you have a capital improvement plan corresponding with it under the Budget Enabling Act. Also, with the DDA, that has to be authorized in our budget as well. We do not get our revenue projections until about late April, early March, or early March, late March, early April, to get our revenue projections tightened up. We begin budget packets in the first of the year, and so we develop a ninety-million-dollar budget with really about a month and a half to put it together, two months to get it here, so these are the reason why we spent over a year working on it. We held a special budget meeting where I essentially outlined the major keynote issues of the budget process. You have the document before you, and we'll discuss at your budget work session after the public hearing, and so there's much time for public discussion, public debate, so I do take issue with the public not being able to have access. There's this fully downloadable as of tomorrow morning, as along with the decade of capital improvement plans, so I highly encourage people to look at our transparency initiative. That is one thing the mayor and council have been very strong about, is transparency, 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 and we've really, I think, one of the, I'd say, best cities in the state when it comes to financial transparency, so...
Madam Mayor.
Are they...
Yeah, I just, again, there was nothing about taking issue with it. I was just making a suggestion for the general public, as we're more engaged and on top of this, that they can look at it, but it also is, if they have time to look through these things to see what changed, gives them a basis to give a little perspective, so I'm, again, looking for a little more interaction maybe in the future, or somehow, how do we do that, just to put it on, out there, that it would be nice to have for the general public and the people interested, time to see if there's any other changes that you put into it, and then to give some feedback.
Also, just to state that, talking about the library earlier, copies of the budget and all of the capital improvement program are in hard copy at the library for those that don't have a computer.
Right.
Or at the city clerk's office. They can come in at any time and look at them there, too, so not everybody, I realize, can get it online, so they are available in those...
And this new stuff will be over there as well?
Yes, it will be.
Right away? That would be great.
In the morning, so it will be there.
Madam Mayor, one thing I would add is, under the city charter, the city manager's responsibility is I have to present to the mayor and council a budget. My responsibility was to present it to the council, which the council makes it public. It would have been inappropriate for me to release that budget before the mayor and council were given it to them, because I work for the mayor and council, and so the reason why I present this, this is my formally presenting the budget to you, and it's the mayor and council's budget now. I don't have the, I mean, it would be inappropriate for me to not give it to my bosses and give it, release it publicly first. Also, I will say, we've held one-on-one briefing sessions with every single council member to brief them on the changes that are in the budget. I have not had that meeting yet with you, Scott. We can try to set that up. I've been trying for a couple of weeks now to set that up. Every council member has got a briefing, but I think, again, my job's to present it to the council, and that is under my charter obligation, which I've done tonight.
So, there is no, as far as you doing your job and getting to us, I'm just addressing this to the fellow city council members and the mayor as a thought, that once we get this stuff, it might be nice in the future to have more time for the public to have access to, to let them have some feedback on it. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
That concludes the regular agenda. We have, I have a couple of announcements, which was just, one of the things was just